I love the part about using the hammer, guys. I've been actually asking Mitch for a larger one because this one's quite small, but he says it's not in the budget this year, so we'll see if we get it. Thank you, Larry. I appreciate that. All right, guys. Welcome, everybody. Thanks for being here. I'd like to call the October 14th, 2025 work session to order. It's now 5:00 PM. The members have an agenda before them. Is there a motion to adopt?
I make a motion to adopt.
You seconded it? Is that what you said, sir? Oh, okay, because your microphone's off, yeah. A motion-
I second that motion.
Oh, excellent. A motion by Mrs. Hoy, seconded by Mr. Usherwood. All in favor? Unanimous? You thought about it, Mr. Grimes? All right. Welcome. Let's stand for a moment of pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. We have a goodly number of presentations on the agenda today, so we're going to start with one of actually our most enjoyable parts of what we do here, which is the student calendar with Dr. Josh Lowe, one of our favorite presenters, actually. Welcome, Dr. Lowe.
I enjoy it as well, sir. All right. We'll start out with the 2027-2028 calendar presentation. Starting out, the timeline communication plan, kind of following up on what I showed you guys in an earlier meeting. Here's the initial timeline that was presented, and as you can see, we're down to present the final version. What I'll show you tonight takes into account feedback from our community, our local school council leaders, and others that have provided that. Be reminded, as we look at the calendar, the considerations, we must have 178 student days, 190 teacher days. We worked to balance the student days between first and second semesters. Always worked to start school, not start school prior to August 1st and complete it by Memorial Day, and always worked to protect our breaks, and that's throughout the year. And that's something I think is pretty much universally appreciated in our community. Looking ahead, this is what was presented to you in an earlier meeting, and I'll share the feedback that we got on this.
Colors didn't change, though?
We played with the colors a bit, yes, yes.
Very nice. Yes, good job. I'm sure Dr. Dugan did that, but-
Ms. Baldwin.
Oh, okay.
Yes. Thank you. First day of school considerations, just as a reminder, kind of see we're consistent with most traditional previous years with the proposed calendar, starting on August 5th for '27-'28. Feedback on the calendar this year, as this was shared out in our community, we have 526 total responses. As you can see, a large majority of those are parents, and also heard from a couple, 10 students, 108 staff members, and then seven just community folks that are in our community that provided feedback on it. The overwhelming majority was positive. I mean, just comments that were liked it. I think the fact that this year's calendar does start, as it does with the breaks kind of falling where they do and wrapping it, or starting on a Thursday and things like that, were things that were positive. The breaks and the timing of the breaks, we got positive feedback on that. Wrapped up the school year by Memorial Day, and then, as I previously said, we're able to align it to start on a Thursday, which is the preferred day by most people. The adjustments that were suggested most frequently to change, it was mentioned the color scheme. In previous years, we've had different colors, and we tried to kind of persight it with the new one, but we adjusted some colors to make it a little more obvious, some of the changes. It was suggested to have less pre-planning days. Of course, that's not something that you can do to accommodate the required number of employee days. Early release days, we still get comments about that, and those are minimized compared to some years prior. And then, beginning later in August or earlier in May for getting out, there's feedback, but once again, you can't really do that unless you start earlier and later or take away the breaks. So those were the largest things we got feedback on. You can see here highlighted some of the changes with stars and the arrows, the K-12 online learning day. We truly just changed the colors, is what it's showing you there. And that's what, I mean, quite a bit of feedback was asking for that. Also, clarification on the last day of school was also a K-12 early release day. That was intended with the first one, but there was some confusion on that with some of the feedback we got from different leaders. So we changed that to comply with the feedback. As I mentioned, the other suggested changes, doing away with the K-12 online learning day, there's only specifically two of those on the calendar, which is a decrease of what it was years ago, as well as, pardon me, as well as the breaks all being timed out the way they wanted. There was not the amount of feedback that there was on some other calendars from previous years. Is there any questions on any of that?
Yeah, just because it's something that we've had to do with our websites, and this is posted online. Do these new revised colors meet accessibility standards for the visually impaired?
Mr. Usherwood, that is a good question. Honestly, I don't know the answer to that. So I'll investigate that and let you know at our next meeting. Any other questions? All right. Once again, there's the timeline. Without any thoughts or concerns, I would come back November 18th and present the final calendar for approval. All right. Thank y'all. All right. Yeah, one more.
For the record, I'll note that you inverse the order, so you did B first, and so we're going to go to A now.
Okay, thank you. So I didn't have the agenda. We were in our earlier discussion. I apologize.
Perfectly understandable. Thank you, Dr. Lowe.
Thank you. 2025-2026 student calendar amendments. Proposed timeline, present the amendments today, and then approve the amendments November 18th will be the proposal. The revisions are to accommodate the high school online learning week. Several years ago, principals came forth and presented this to help accommodate the large number of tests that go on in our community between AP testing, working for EOCs and things like that to accommodate truly just the staff required to accommodate those number of tests as well as logistics involved. It was agreed upon that year, each year we would add the online learning week in May, once we got those dates. And we don't get that. I know that this calendar's the current year, but we don't get those dates well enough to do it when you do the initial presentation. So each year, we kind of have to come back and do something of this nature. The other thing is high school early release day adjustment. May, here, I'll go ahead and flip. May the 18th and 19th is actually the dates of West Forsyth graduation and Lambert High School graduation this current year. When the initial calendar was presented a few years ago in 2023, it did not, we did not have the times of those graduations and when we received that from the, whatever it's called in Gwinnett now, the-
Gas South.
Gas South, thank you. To accommodate that, our staffs have to be at graduation, our students, and you can't leave the other kids at school. So you can't, we need to adjust that to be on, to be high school early release, and that's kind of consistent with what we've done in past years as well, which would be done countywide at all the high schools with our transportation needs and so forth. So the proposal is to add the high school online learning week, May 4th through the 8th, as well as add those two early release days for high school only to accommodate the two graduations that follow those dates. Any questions on that?
Any questions?
No.
No, these will sit out for review.
Okay, well, I'll come back the 18th and present this for approval. All right, thank y'all.
Thank you, Dr. Lowe.
Thanks.
All right. Next is item C, which is traditionally after B, but today it's after A, which is fine. And we'll ask Mr. Derek Hershey to come up. You all right? We have a nurse. Nurse Abilas here, if you need her.
Suzie Wolf.
Right here?
Yeah. All right. Good afternoon, board. Thanks for letting the HR team come and present. I'm Derek Hershey, Associate Superintendent of HR, and I've got with me Ms. Laura Adams, Coordinator of Resource Development, and Dr. Jamie Brown, Talent Coordinator for Certified Staff, and a whole lot of HR people behind me.
You guys are supposed to wave.
Yeah, there you go. So part of our goal areas, of course, always connects to the strategic plan specifically around staff recruitment and development for acquiring and retaining excellent staff, and then also both building and developing individual staff capacity. So a little bit about the HR for this year. As of right now, we have 4,305 certified staff members, 2,222 classified staff members, for a total of 6,527 employees. We also have a total of 1,675 subs, which 483 of those are certified. That's important because that pool is what we continue to use, especially for long-term substitutes and potentially higher, for a grand total of 8,202 employees of our district. You can see here just a glimpse of years of experience, very well-rounded staff in terms of percentage-wise, the number of years.
Could you go back to the slide?
Yes, sir.
That does mean that over 15% of the staff could be retired in the next four years, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
It's a big number.
It is a big number. For our administration updates, we have a total of 115 assistant principals, total of 43 principals, and these numbers represent the number of new APs and new principals within that year. So over a four-year span, we have a total of 71 new APs, which represents 62% of our administrators are new within the last four years. And of our principals, we have a total of 26, which is about 60% of our new, of our principals are new within the last four years. So you can see we work very hard to make sure that we're supporting them as they're new to their role. I'm not sure why that didn't show up. We'll come back to it, but one of the things we try to do, we've implemented in the past, four years ago, we studied a book as an HR team called "The Employee Experience Advantage" by Jacob Morgan. That launched really how we frame the employee experience for our staff members, for our school administrators. The employee experience advantage is essentially this. Their employees have desired wants, needs, expectations, and employer has the same thing. And so the employee experience is really the in-between of how to essentially make that work together. So for us, we have four areas of the employee experience. I'm not sure why this graphic didn't come up, but it's recruiting. And so making sure that while we're recruiting people, we are fully engaging them, we're making sure they're connected. When we onboard them, we're doing the same thing. We're being very intentional about how we're hiring people, how to keep them connected. Then while they're with us, we work at career development, we work at performance management and employee relations, and making sure that those staff members feel supported and developed and we're able to grow their capacity to give them as many opportunities in our district that we can. And then lastly, we work through our exit experience, meaning when they leave us, we want them to leave us in a way that we know we are still going to bring value to them, and they're going to bring value to us. They're with us forever.
These are our new numbers for this year, and this is a total of all our new certified and classified staff that were hired this year. Reason we included classified, because we have to remember, one, Scott Fellkamp's doing a great job of recruiting classified for candidates and employees. But we have to remember, being a full-service employer, that the classified people, our data doesn't start with our classified. Teachers can't teach if kids don't get there, if they're not fed, if they don't have clean environments to go into. So, and something else, Derek mentioned this previously, the substitutes that we have that are certified, 46 of them came from being substitutes last year. Just this year, I was at Pools Mill, met one of the new teachers, and she happened to say, this time last year, I was just substituted. Another big part is we're always doing things to attract our paraprofessionals into full-time roles. That's one of our major pipelines. Laura and Michelle do a great job of telling them about grants and opportunities to become full-time certified. Those are- I missed this slide. We do have, we added, we got about five different pipelines that we service our candidates from. One is substitute to full-time. The other is the one we just, paraprofessional teacher. We do college. We did 81 college visits last year, and that's how we're finding our brand-new teachers. We also have industry. Folks are changing industry. Those are the folks that have been in the industry for a while. They find out that, hey, you know, education's a great opportunity for me to connect with people, so we're getting people from industry. And then we're getting folks who are just coming from other places. I like to call those people hashtag "how to get to Forsyth." And I don't know if you've ever heard that. I don't know if anybody said to you, hey, how do I get to Forsyth? We have a great product here, and that's what people say. So I always talk about that hashtag. If you look at it, this is where our new folks came from. FCS events, now this one's a little tricky because we do college visits, but just like last year, Michelle McGinnis took three of our staff members down to Georgia College of State. A couple of the Georgia College of State kids visited the table. They find out, hey, I want to know more about Forsyth. They carpool with about eight people, and then they come up to the job fair the very next day. And the people that you met and probably picked up in the golf cart, bringing them to the building. So that can be a little tricky. And then we have others. The others, again, are those folks who try to think about, how do I get to Forsyth? Those are how to get to Forsyth people. We are intent on growing our brand. We want to grow our brand. Dr. Michelle Dugan, her communication staff really encourages us to tell our story, the story of Forsyth. We already know we got a great product. How do we start marketing that product? How do we brand that product? Right now, we're doing a great job of doing that. Like I said, we've gone to 81 different college visits last year. What we do now is we, I reach out to the colleges and ask, can we have speaking engagements? Can we get in front of their students? So again, we can brand, we can tell the story of Forsyth County Schools. Last year, a year before, Michelle and Derek go to Berry College. They go to a classroom engagement, they speak to the students. I come back a month later, everybody's coming to my table saying, hey, I want to find out, how do I get to Forsyth? Just last week, I was at Alabama, speaking to students before the job fair comes, starts. Next hour, they come to the table, tell me more about Forsyth County. So again, the way we brand, this is another great way, an opportunity to get in front of students and a way to attract quality educators straight out of college. This is how it breaks down for our new certified people. As you can see, a lot of people, you know, you made the comment, a lot of people retiring, we're working on getting new people in. Here's the funny thing about the new people. We have to keep in mind that within that zero to three, that does not mean everybody's fresh out of college. You have some of those industry people who are in there, too. They haven't been working for 15 to 20 years, but they're still in their first-year education. That brings me to the fact of, when we talk about employee experience, Derek mentioned the exit experience. I have a great story about a candidate I was recruiting last year at Auburn. She comes up to the table, she's from the Midwest, I think Missouri or something. I ask her, how did you know to come send an interview with me? She said, well, I was on a flight with this woman who just retired from Forsyth County. She raved about Forsyth so much that I felt like I had to sign up for an interview with you guys. So again, Scott and I aren't the only recruiters. Our folks in the schools are recruiting as well and things like that. Even better yet, again, just talking about how Dr. Dugan is wanting us to tell our story. I just happened to be in Colorado, Estes Park, Colorado this past weekend, Sunday. I'm in a fudge shop, and I got a jacket on that says Forsyth County. The guy says, 1,200 miles away now. So the guy says, is that Forsyth in Georgia? I say, yes. He says, oh, my friend has a chiropractor business there, and he's always talking about how amazing the school system is. 1,200 miles away. So again, when we talk about telling our story, branding, we have to continue to do that. As we attract new people in, Derek mentioned it before, we want to engage. Dr. Salome started it a couple of years ago. Michelle McGinnis picked up the ball and ran with it. We're trying to make sure we engage our people as soon as they hire. You all know, again, you do your part by driving people in the golf cart. First of all, I can't tell you how many times after the job fair, you guys might not be around, but people say, I got to find a way to get to Forsyth. After they experienced the job fair, they want to be a part of us. But you're hired in February, we had to find ways to engage people. So we do a bi-weekly newsletter between that time. Then during, in May, we have the Forsyth Connect, where they meet leaders, they hear from leaders, they meet their ETC, they meet their content specialists, they get their computer. Again, we're connecting with them before the summer starts, and then you guys all know about our new employee orientation before school starts. That's what we're doing to get our people engaged right away. Laura's going to tell you more about how we continue to retain and engage our folks.
All right. Again, sorry that these graphics are not pulling up, but just wanted to share a little bit about our career development. So as a team, career development is a really vital part of what we do in our employee experience. Investing in our people and making a lasting impact is first and foremost. Of our staff that have attended our wellness trainings, we have an impressive 96.47% certified retention rate, and we hear numerous powerful stories, just like Jamie shared.
Keep talking.
Just like Jamie has shared, so many stories from our attendees who have come to these trainings about the impact of wellness and how it's not only helped them professionally, but personally. We hear a lot of personal stories from those. In addition-
Laura, do you want to hold on a second? Because I know it's going to be distracting for everybody while Derek's directing traffic. And Derek, Larry's happy to look through your next presentation before you come up.
Sorry, a lot of our graphics have to be out there for you guys to see.
They're pretty graphics. We like, we enjoy.
Yeah, what questions do you have since we've been talking? Ms. Hoyes, do you have any questions?
No, no questions, but while you guys are working on that, the job fair is one of our, we really enjoy it. This year was a little concerning because we got several complaints, actually, about Mr. Usherwood's driving skills in the-
I actually received three complaints in the HR office.
So-
No, that's okay. But in all honesty, people bring that up, it's a very big deal. And when you, when they come in and they find out who drove them, they're shocked.
Yeah.
Because it is, and I'll tell you, our job fairs continue to go up. Our numbers have gone up every year.
Well, we risk hypothermia for them, so we hope it's meaningful.
I'll ask a question real fast, based on, you don't even have to have the slides for this. I bet you were talking about new teachers and new administrators over the last couple of years. And I think it's just important to say, that's not necessarily new headcount. Those are-
Correct.
Yeah, that's, we've not added 71 administrators in the past few years. Most of those are, there may be a few new headcount, but most of those are going to be replacements.
That retirement wave that we pointed out, do we see? We're, like, that's been going on now for the last, gosh dang, what, five, six years? That we've seen big numbers and change, or mainly because of retirements?
The majority of people that leave our leadership positions, there's been a couple that have moved on to different positions. Some move up to different county-level positions, both other districts and our own districts. But the majority of them retire. They don't leave just to leave.
Hey, guys, for the sake of, they all have access to these that you sent them previously, correct? We just need to get it fixed, if we can, Michelle, before we put this out to the public. If you guys are okay to proceed without all your graphics.
We'll do the best we can.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, for the next slide. So for our career growth, what you would have seen in the middle was our career lattice, our FCS career lattice. And that was really showing our employees their next steps as far as different roles they could move into, from our certified to our classified to certified roles, our professional roles. And what we're very proud of in the career lattice is that we embedded all the different leadership support opportunities for our staff, too, in that lattice. And in addition to that, our Advanced Degree Fair would have been, the graphic on the left. It is our third year hosting that event. It's been a very popular event. It actually takes place next Thursday, if you'd like to pop in. This event connects our employees with over 15 universities, so they can explore advanced degree options. Also, very popular for our Forsyth Teacher Academy. And so grateful to have the support of Jennifer Elwood because the first year we did this, my line was out the door. So now I have more staff to help support the interest in the academy, which has been a great piece of that Advanced Degree Fair. And then the graphic on the right, the smaller graphic, would have shown you our working genius and our crucial conversations, which are additional trainings that we offer for our staff. All right, so now on this one, you can see we want to take a deeper dive into how our Advanced Degree Fair really impacts the district, and that's what this graphic is going to show you. You can see over the past three years that we've had our Advanced Degree Fair. We started with 102 certification upgrades, year one of the Advanced Degree Fair. Year two, we bumped up to 154. You may at first glance think it went down, but actually, the 122 certification upgrades is just the first two months of this school year. We already have had 122 upgrades. Now, I do have to quote Dr. Brown with this next statement. He always says certification upgrades are a win-win-win for our district. So I'm going to give you those three wins. The first win is for our students because they are going to have the advantage of having teachers that are academically trained and advancing their own education. Win number two is our teachers. The financial benefit is huge for our teachers as they go back and they get advanced degrees. And then win number three is for the district because we're going to have stronger, more highly qualified staff as they advance their degrees. All right, well, let me talk you through the Forsyth Teacher Academy. What you would have seen on this slide is three different pillars of what our academy supports. On the left would have been our GTAP program. So we're going to start there. Our theme across all of our Forsyth Teacher Academy programs is keeping it personal. We are so proud to announce we have 69 active candidates. Mr. Grimes, you might remember that from when you popped into our seminar a few weeks ago. Of those 69 active candidates, 42 are about to graduate from our program. Now, why I highlight that number, it's the largest cohort to date for our academy. We're so very proud of those 42 candidates. And let me give you a quote. So one of our graduates last spring at our graduation said, "FTA did not just prepare me for a career, it created a passion." And that's our goal in the academy. If you look at the 46.37% of our candidates that are in year one, two, or three, a large majority of those are our candidates in the academy. They may be second-career individuals who have had a long career in industry, and now they're coming back to pour into our students and into our programming. And so with that said, it is developing additional passions for people that are really bringing such great wealth and information into our district. And then the middle column of this graphic would have been our induction program and mentoring. With our induction program, because we know we have a 45.67%, we want to make sure in those year one, two, and three, we're giving very targeted supports to our new teachers. Every new teacher in year one, two, and three gets a school-based mentor who is experienced. There is an induction leader at every single school in our district that oversees our induction program, and there's an induction administrator in every school. And we're very proud to present to the board that we are applying for the GTO's induction certified program this year. So our induction program, we start our application, and we should know, hopefully, by the first of the year if we are a certified program. So we're looking forward to that. The other graphic that would have been on this slide is our endorsement program. Our endorsements, we offer five endorsements, but we have a brand-new one this year. I didn't put it on our list because it's a pilot. And it is our school safety and anti-gang endorsement. It's a pilot that just started in the state. We're one of the first districts to jump on that pilot. We have about 20 candidates in that endorsement. And those candidates came from our safety department. And that would be our SASs. And then also our social workers are taking that endorsement. So we're very proud to see how that endorsement goes and we will report back. The next slide we're going to look at is financial wellness. We have a grant that was released from this state. It's our parent-to-teacher reimbursement grant. Now, this is going to give financial support to paraprofessionals completing a GTAP program. So great news for the Forsyth Teacher Academy. But even beyond that, if we have those in our district that go through a Metro RISA or another GTAP, they are also eligible for this grant. We reimbursed 32 employees last year over $140,000. And I want to give a big shout out to Michelle McGinnis because not only did we get the grant, but Michelle found it. She researched it, she applied for it, and then we were able to really celebrate these employees. We have round three of the grant, which is about to, we've applied for that and we've been awarded. And we will be releasing over $160,000 in our next round. Now, this is a great way for that parent-to-teacher pipeline that Dr. Brown talked about. We really want to keep investing in our parapros. In addition to that, we want to talk about some financial wellness that Scott Philcamp was able to really get out, boots on the ground, and, and really go out and speak to all of our classified staff about Peasers. That's our bus drivers, custodians, and food service employees. And he was able to really educate them on the 403B 4% match options in the district. He went to all the schools. He also went to the transportation district meetings. And if you look on the screen, you're going to see what happened because of Scott's efforts. We, we started with 297 Peasers classified staff in November of last year. And we were at 408 by the end of the spring. That was a 37.3% increase. In fact, due to Scott's work, Corbridge Financial was awarded the second highest increase nationwide for K-12 public schools. So they, they love Scott Philcamp. Let's just say that. All right, I'll turn it back over to Derek.
All right, so this, this slide just represents a variety of different tools. So not just do we have this employee experience, but we really do have a toolbox for our staff members to go surrounding financial wellness, career development, and employee wellness as well. And so this is provided for all staff members to be able to access. And then also through our exit experience, we want to make sure our staff members, as Dr. Brown just talked about, when, when teachers or staff members leave Forsyth County Schools, they essentially become the best recruiters for us. And we say all the time, if you're a teacher and you're running 100 miles per hour, you're needed by so many people, we want to make sure they still have purpose when they retire. So what can they do to plug in? Do they want to sub? Do they want to teach? Well, maybe they teach 49%. Do they want to mentor? Do they want to coach? What can we do to continue to plug them in? And so that's our goal. Ultimately, we want them, want them speaking highly about their experiences so our next generation of teachers or, and, and workers are able to come in and to be able to continue to provide great service for our students. And as a result of our great work, and I'll say the great work of, of our district, it's not the HR team that does the retention. It's not just the schools. It's not just the district office staff. It's everybody. Everybody is, is in charge of essentially building our community of schools. And I'm really proud of all the departments at the district level. I'm proud of all the school, the administrators, the teachers, the superintendents, the boardwork. Everybody has put this together to be able to really put us incredibly 89th best place to work in the nation according to Forbes List and fifth best in the state. And that is just an incredible journey. The, the niche continues to shift and so that one continues to change. But in terms of Forbes, the fifth best in the state, you look at the other people or the other organizations on that list, Delta. Yes, it's a big deal. We're one of two public school systems in the country that are on that list. The other school's in Texas. And so I'm really proud of that for our entire system. And then this is a result of all of that. If you look over the past three years, our certified recruiting, retention rate has gone up from 92% to right around above 95%. And for our classified, from 89% to almost 92.5%. And so kudos to all of us for continuing to provide a great working environment for our staff. We want to recruit them. We want to develop them. We want to keep them and continue to do great work for our kids in our system. Point, I'll ask for any questions. Yes, Ms. Hoist.
Hello. I'm not going to ask any questions tonight about this, but I just wanted to say thank you. You and your team do a really good job of, of hiring and developing and recruiting and retaining our teachers and constantly looking for ways to better all of that. And I think our school system, the results that we have each year, you know, the numbers speak for themselves. So thank you to you and your team.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Derek, I know we won't dig into details because you're doing a lot of research, but I think it's important to note the success of FTA, which has been just tremendous and especially under the leadership that we have in there now with, with the ladies that are running that. You have started to look into doing something similar potentially down the road for developing our own leadership certification program, correct?
Yes.
And, and you're going to continue to dig and dig and dig at that? I'm just putting this out here publicly, so you've got to keep digging at that.
Sure.
That's been a dream of mine for a long time, man.
Yes, we're excited about that. We know succession planning is really important and we've got to continue to build leaders. And so to be able to implement programs, to be able to support our staff, especially those that are looking to do it. And that's one of the reasons why we're doing the advanced degree fair. To be able to put tier one, tier two certification in place is really important. Because to get into those roles, a lot, a lot of those folks need to have it. You know, as I was a brand-new teacher one day, someone invested in me, told me that they felt like they saw leadership in me and I was able to do something with that. I think we all have some, somewhat of a similar story. And so we've got to continue that charge so that we're building the next generation of leaders for Forsyth County Schools.
And I think, I think you made a great point about the Teacher Academy. And I think from a visit with them a couple of weeks ago and just the variety of experience those candidates bring, from people that are in industry to a former NBA player and everywhere in between. And so I think it's a great opportunity that they've got. You guys do a fantastic job. Obviously, our people is what makes this what it is. It's not, you know, this is a people business. You know, Dr. Bearden and, and Dr. Young always say that. This is, this is a people business. And just one last thing in your list of accolades there, you can add that I've actually been designated number one school board chair in Forsyth County. So, yeah, you can put that in there.
Has that been officially voted on?
It'll be soon. It'll be public soon.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. All right. Thank you all. And sorry about the presentation. The image is not working. We'll work on that.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
We'll get you everything. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda D, right after C, as expected, is East Floss presentation with Mr. Matt Wark and Dr. Michelle Dugan. Two regulars here.
I tried to make M and M stick. I don't think it's sticking.
We recruited a third one. He's only presenting. You have an M in your first name.
Oh, there you go.
Well, good evening. Thank you. No, it's just the two tonight. Thank you so much for the opportunity to share kind of where we are in the process of informing our voters in Forsyth County residents about East Floss, what it means for our community and what it means for our schools. And that is a little bit about what we will share this evening. Our purpose is simple. We want to provide the transparent factual information that does help our voters in our community to make an informed decision. And of course, that aligns with our goal as a district to be safe, connected, and thriving along with our bold goal, board goals and the strategic plan areas. Learner experience by funding those innovative spaces, expanding technology opportunities, and also making sure that our students are safe. I know that the human resources team did a fantastic job talking about the climate, culture, and community that is so important to our families. And part of that is the way that East Floss funds improving security systems, safety. Our, our buildings are attracting people from all over the country and beyond. And so that's important to note. We'll give an overview, just a reminder that East Floss stands for Education Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax. I don't think I've gotten that right the first time, the entire season, but I'm on my way there. And again, this is a proposed continuation of a consumer sales tax, a penny sales tax based on purchased goods that has been in place for six iterations now. And this is a proposed continuation of the seventh. As we answer questions from our community about East Floss, again, what it means, what it is, we've had some misinformation that we just wanted to clarify here for you today in the, in the goal of being transparent with our public. And so Mr. Matt Wark is going to share a little bit about that now.
Thank you. And no applause was a little bit different version than what you've all heard quite a few times already. But we're excited to go through these because these are the biggest talking points that we're finding as we're talking to different community groups. We had a great opportunity to talk to the retired teachers group this morning. They were an awesome group. They were very excited about this, very educated as well. The first myth we want to talk through is people say that East Floss is a new tax. It is not a new tax. Again, this is just a continuation of a penny sales tax that's been around for over 30 years. We're currently in SPOSS 6. We're asking to move on to SPOSS 7. So it is not a new tax. One, another myth is East Floss funds can be used for salaries and daily expenses. Our referendum does not allow the use of these dollars to be used for any salaries for any employees. We've never done that in the past and we are not planning to do that in the future. Everything that's done with East Floss dollars is the stuff. Coming back from capital projects, from new buildings, additions, roofing, flooring, painting, those kind of things, parking lots, furniture, a lot of people forget some of the things that we do, STEM upgrades, fine arts, safety, IT, computers, things of that nature. It's all the items that we need to continue to have a great school system. East Floss, another myth is East Floss takes place of a budget planning. This is obviously very important for people to know that these dollars do not just go into the general fund. It's two separate revenue bases. It's very important that people know that that's not surplanting or anything of that nature to where we're using SPOSS dollars to help our general fund budget. East Floss eliminates a 65 school tax exemption. That's another myth that we've heard, heard in our community. Again, that does not, East Floss does not affect the senior tax exemption. Just very simple. When an East Floss is renewed, two pennies are collected at the same time. We've heard that since we're going in November, if it passes, we're going to collect an extra penny. The SPOSS 7, if it was to pass November 4th, it would only start once SPOSS 6 completes. Either we collect our total amount or the five-year period comes to end SPOSS 6. So again, we want to make it very clear to our community members that just because if they vote on it and it passes, it does not add an extra penny. It is still the one penny. One more page of myths. Vote for East Floss means property taxes are going to go up. As we presented, we've talked very extensively that this is a second revenue source that helps keep our millage rates down. It helps reduce the cost and the money that we use from the general fund by having this other revenue source. Another myth is East Floss funds are used for roads, bridges, and other government projects. We are the education SPOSS. The E in SPOSS is very important that people know. You'll see the ballot. It says SPOSS for education. The penny that is received for the East Floss, 100% of it comes to education. We do not share this penny with the county, so certain county projects do not use this penny. This is solely for education. And then if East Floss does not pass, projects won't get completed. That is not true as well. We have a very long list of projects. We'll see on this slide. You've all sat through many presentations that shows that list. What's going to happen if the East Floss does not pass is we all sit down and talk through what our biggest priorities are and possibly look at other, other revenue sources to make that happen of the items that we absolutely know we must have over the next five-year period. And then the last myth we want to talk about is East Floss only benefits certain areas of the county. It's very, very important because I hear that from my own community saying, "What's in it for my kid's school? I only really care about my kids go to this school. What do they get?" The beauty of SPOSS 7, if it passes in November, every single school gets one form or fashion of an item on this SPOSS list. If it's an Alliance Academy, they're going to have STEM upgrades, equipment upgrades. All those things are high schools and elementaries. We'll have turf for their baseball, softball. Every elementary school is going to have some type of turf added to their playgrounds. We're going to do additions to, every middle school will be touched in one way or another through either a fine arts bump out or a different addition for overcrowding. So that's a great piece about SPOSS 7. Every school, even the ones that are brand-new, there will be something in it for them. So that's very exciting to do. Real quick update about East Floss, the actual list of projects, the colors matter. You know, we've talked about this in previous meetings and presentations because there is that penalty for if we bring in additional revenue. So our current SPOSS 7 referendum going in November will raise that limit to 400 million. We have a priority list of projects. Through the red, we know that this is a massive priority for our district over the five years. We feel very confident that our SPOSS 7 revenues will cover these. High needs of importance are blue. We also again feel confident that these revenues will continue over the five years and will complete everything on the blue list. Then the gold list is created because if you get through the red and the blue and we continue to have a great community, thriving community, to where revenues continue to come in, we will be very transparent and go into our gold list. So then everyone knows where the dollars are going as those revenues continue. And just a real quick summary, not going through all of the lists, but it's important to note a few items, especially on the red list. Safety is the number-one priority that we always deal with every single year. It's the number-one thing that we want to make sure that our students and staff and community members, when they come onto our properties, that they are safe. So they will have an allocation of dollars to use as they see fit. We are planning to build a new elementary school on the northwest part of the county to help relieve those overcrowded elementary schools. We're going to look at doing three additions at Liberty, Ottwell, and North Middle to increase their capacities to 1,600, as well as additions at Lambert South in Denmark to increase their capacities to 3,100. I mentioned previously, we're going to add turf to the baseball and softball fields at all high schools to make them multi-use fields that they are not at this point in time, as well as we're going to have play areas and allocation at all 23 elementary schools. So we're very excited about that red list. So is our community. A lot of people are excited about these things that are coming forward in the future. Blue high needs is the IT, same thing for technology initiatives. Fine arts, again, going back to it's not just building, we get equipment and things of that nature with these dollars. Additional fine arts expansions at those five middle schools. A renovation to Vicory Middle and Elementary based on the post-road widening. Some more maintenance lifecycle going down. Furniture, a lot of people don't notice the furniture that's being aged out over our older schools. It's excellent to use the SPOSS dollars for those type of items. More buses, more STEM upgrades, that's very important. So again, we feel confident in the red and the blue. And then the continued funding comes available, we'll move into the gold list. A Coal Mountain addition and more lifecycle updates as you see on the list. I'll let Michelle come back, kind of talk about what we've done.
So again, all this information can be found on our website. We do have a hub linked both on our homepage, also in the communications section regarding financial transparency and specific to East Floss. We are now in advanced voting. Advanced voting actually opened today, October 14th, and that will continue. There's additional information about voting on our website and linked for in-person voting and also how to request an absentee ballot as needed. And so that's just our overview tonight. We'd love to answer any questions you have.
Questions?
Just more of a comment. I think this came up when I was with, at the North LSC meeting combined. I think there were some parents that were concerned that we were going to increase capacity as we were going to be redistricting middle schools so that North, Liberty, and Ottwell had 1,600 students in it after this. But I would say that is not the case. That it's being built for future growth as we see it so we can accommodate up to the 16. Yeah, to prevent.
It's to help prevent. And also, it was a great question by that individual. They thought that by building the addition, we were going to redistrict to bring more kids to it. But in the case mainly, it's to make sure that we relieve the need for modular units. We're very excited that everything on here would relieve the modular units at all those schools, which is exciting. But we would not redistrict kids to come in. These additions would build the capacity around the current students that are there, as well as looking at future growth.
Yeah, I think it's, it's, the community should know that this proposed East Floss kind of represents a bit of a paradigm shift for how we've traditionally done things. We've traditionally in, in the past have dealt with growth by building new buildings, right? And that to the tune of a half billion dollars over the last decade or so. We'll build two or three additions for the price of one new school. Those kids are largely there already. It's going to get rid of modulators, which nobody, let's face it, nobody really prefers modulators, right? And we get rid of a good number of modulators. There's a lot of good in East Floss. I don't like taxes. I'm not a tax guy. I'm not advocating for more taxes. I pay taxes, so you know, it's not like, there, there's nothing in it for me except a world-class education for my kids. And I'm, I'm personally hopeful that East Floss, you know, people see it for what it is, which is a consumption tax that is, 40% of it is paid for by people that don't live here, right? So it's a direct offset. So, it's a direct offset to the residential taxpayer. So, there's a lot of good in EastFloss. You know, these projects are necessary. They have to happen, one way or the other, and EastFloss goes a long way to kind of relieve that burden on the residential taxpayer. So, the ballot question is super convoluted, so I'll give you like a simple version. Reauthorize the tax once the current one expires for five years. That's the question, right? It's, you read it, you need, you know, a doctorate degree to understand what it says, but that's basically what it is, you know?
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Next up, we have Alert Systems with Mr. Todd Shirley and Mr. Mike Evans, emerging from the Batcave.
This will be a pretty quick presentation, because it really is more informational to let you know where we stand regarding Senate Bill, I believe it's Senate Bill 17, the Ricky Nellis's law for school systems to have implemented by July 1 of this upcoming school year, a mobile alert system in place. So, we currently just wrapped up an RFP that was out for a couple of weeks. We met today to review and begin that process. So, over the next two weeks, we are going to be evaluating the submissions that came through. We had six submissions that were involved. Technology and school safety are heavily involved together, because this really is a full comprehensive system that will involve a lot of different components. Within the next two weeks, as we go through, the goal is to narrow it down to several different vendors, perhaps one or two or three vendors, isolate those, bring in for interviews and presentations, or possibly do site visits as well. The law consists of a mobile alerts system, whether that's a badge or device that every employee would be wearing for the classroom, so that they can trigger either help from the school administrator, or direct calls to public service for emergency services as well, as well as mapping configurations to locate and track down where that emergency notification came from within the building as well. The, within the next couple of weeks, following that, once we get it narrowed down, and again, this coincides with after the SPOSS vote as well, we plan to bring it to the board for a vote in, at the November board meeting. Other than that, it's pretty much straightforward as well. Anything else to add for that, Mr. Shirley?
No, nothing else really to add. You covered it all. We will obviously make sure that the-
You want to come here in front of Mike?
Yeah, we'll make sure that the companies that submitted the RFPs meet all the standards. And I think, just glancing over them today, we were, Steve and I were able to go through two of them. We're going to have, we're going to have something good to put in front of you. So, real pleased with the folks that step forward.
I just want to point out, I know it may seem like the turnaround is really quick with two weeks for that, and, you know, to get the RFPs, and another two weeks to come back and brief you. But this is something that this group of gentlemen and their teams have been working on for well over a year, really since Barrow, trying to find the exact right system for, you know, for our school system. So, you guys have been putting a lot of time and effort. It's not just this quick two-week turnaround, in case somebody was worried about that.
I want to give Mike a ton of credit. He is really, he's done a load of the work. There's a lot of technology components that we just, we don't fully grasp in school safety, but what we know is, when we push the button, we want it to work correctly.
Great team effort. What we do put forward is, what Mr. Shirley mentioned, it's something that we're going to feel comfortable with and confident within the school system.
Hopefully, never have to use.
Exactly. 100%.
We appreciate the work you guys are doing, and this, we know has been going on for a long time, and, you know, for clarity, this is, you know, a panic system, emergency system, in case something, you know, which we hope never happens, was to happen. Several of us, maybe even all of us, visited with Mike, some of the schools, to see some technologies that we've been piloting already. So, this has been going on for some time. A lot of thought has been put into this, so eager to see how it all unfolds. And the deadline for compliance with the law is June of next year?
July 1 of 2026 is when everything has to be activated.
This system has to be operational July 1 of next year.
That's correct.
Questions?
No, I was just going to say, I want to commend you all on the depth of research that you've been doing, because when we did tour the facility, everyone in the building is exposed to testing this, which I think is important. So, thank you for your due diligence, because this is such an important-
Well, and just also know that there have been a lot of conversations over the last few years with these companies. We've met a lot of them at vendor fairs, and have spoken to surrounding counties as well. We're very close to the folks in Gwinnett County, and we've had a lot of conversations with them about their research, too.
That's great.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. All right. Next up, Dr. Michelle Dugan, again. Review of Policy BCBI: Public Participation in Board Meetings. One of our favorite part of board meetings.
Me, too. Good evening again. So, as Chairman Valdez mentioned, this is Policy BCBI up for review. This policy addresses public participation in board meetings. More specifically, it is addressing the rules of conduct and participation procedures for public participation in the course of business for the school board meetings that are publicly viewable. There was a review of this policy. We felt that the last time it was reviewed and revised was last year. We do not recommend any changes to this policy at this time. We believe it is appropriate as it stands, and meets all the guidelines as required. Any questions?
Yeah, no.
Okay. So, we'll have that sit for 30 days for public review, just to look at the document. And BCBI will be available on the website tomorrow.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Dugan. Next up, Dr. Josh Low, again. Wow. They should have just put you like in a sequential ACBD. Yeah. Review of Policy IBB Charter Schools.
All right. Coming back to look at this. This policy was adopted and last reviewed in March of 2015. This year, I'm working with our legal team to comply with new legislation that came out in the 2025 session, and ensure that we comply with the state charter petition process, dates, and timelines, and so forth. The revisions in green are proposed for adoption to comply with those laws. As I said, we work with our legal, Dr. Salome, and the legal experts on this, to be sure we're complying. So, want to put that out for discussion, and-
This was all pretty well prescribed for us by the law.
It is. Any questions? If not, I would say we let it sit 30 days and come back. Thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. Low.
Yes.
All right. Next up is Future Agenda Items. Anybody have something? No? I do have one. I'd like to put on our next November work session, an item. We've been kind of conceptualizing in the visionary stage, a potential technology center, you know, combination of vocation, CTAE, STEM, with the kind of aim of producing, you know, the next generation's workforce. We know that all students are not destined or meant for college, but there's so much growing demand for vocation and other trades. We're envisioning something that pulls an industry, and pulls an industry investment as well into this facility. I know the other Dr. Low, Valerie Low, has been kind of conceptualizing this and has made some visits. So, I'd like to ask her to come in and give us an update where she's at, and perhaps talk about some next steps to take this from vision to mission.
So, maybe at our next work session in November? Would give her some time to put her thoughts together on paper for you would be great.
Everybody okay with that? All right. And that concludes the presentation portion of the agenda. Next up is Action Items. The first action item on the agenda is the 2026 Board of Education meeting dates. Everybody have that information? Everybody good? All right. You guys want to see them, or you've already seen them? I think everybody's had a chance to see it, but it'll be on, you know, posted publicly if the public is interested in that. So, hearing nothing, I'll seek a motion to adopt the 2026 Board of Education meetings.
Can I make a motion to adopt?
Excellent. A motion by Mrs. Hoyes, a second by Mr. Usherwood. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? Next action item up, Stop the Bleed Kits. And we're going to invite Nurse Heidi Avila and Mr. Brad Richards set up to talk to us a little bit about this.
Thank you for the opportunity to discuss, and request the purchase of something, again, that we hope that we would never have to employ, but if we did, is certainly critical to the health and well-being of our students, staffs, and visitors. And I just want to open up with just a little bit of the background as to the acquisition of it. And Heidi is here, that she can discuss anything about the actual kit itself, and anything in particular to how it will be used in the schools. The Georgia Trauma Commission is a subsidiary of the state of Georgia, and they have worked in conjunction for years with an outfit called the North American Rescue to build a particular bleeding kit. And in doing so, they have secured extremely aggressive pricing for all state entities as a K-12 public entity, where we're able to purchase off of that contract, and it would be substantially better than anything that we could do in the marketplace. And we verify that ourselves internally. So, this purchase would be for 2,375 units that would be bought and brought into the distribution center, and we would, based on Heidi's distribution list, our staff would take those out to each school, with the intent of having a kit in every class. It's the same kit that we already have in the schools. There's one hanging on the wall, I think. Heidi's holding one Van Nuys style here for you to see. And I'll just turn the floor over to you, if you have any comments you want to make about the kit itself.
Yeah, so we have them placed strategically now in our hallways, near our fire extinguishers. So, we have those cabinets kind of labeled with a red stripe across it, so that our staff knows where they're located. It's always been the question on, if we had an event at school, how do we get to them when we're closing our doors in a code red, keeping our doors locked, and having access to the kits if needed? And so, that is, having them in every single classroom is definitely a goal of ours, and the funding to be able to do that is, you know, has been, you know, difficult for our schools to be able to fundraise and get those in every single school. So, having them in there is just truly life-saving. It is the most preventable injury, is severe bleeding, is to have a tourniquet to be able to stop that and quickly save a life. We've done, we've actually had two of these at schools from injuries that we have actually deployed. So, this isn't just for a mass event, but this would be for an injury that caused severe bleeding. So, we have a lot of different programs, cafeterias, we have a lot of different areas where there's high-risk areas for injury. So, to have these readily accessible is just, it's truly going to be life-saving. Yep. Everything in these kits is everything that would be needed. There's gloves, there's compact gauze, there's a tourniquet themselves. The thought is, I know school safety has the red booklets that are in every classroom, it's just to have these hanging right next to that. So, they would be to the classroom, not per teacher, but to the classroom. It would just stay from year to year.
Awesome. Questions?
I was thinking it's great, because I know we have a strong partnership with the fire department as well, and they can teach with these, because they utilize the same kits and have instructors. Heidi, you've come in and helped with our staff before, so I can see.
Yeah. And our school nurses train our staff every year, so our staff actually does the hands-on training, knows how to put on tourniquets.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a great, a great decision, you know, these, and this kind of injury, arterial bleeding or seconds, is the difference between life and death. So, if you got to be running around trying to find one of these kits, it could, and poorly, and we had a case here some years ago where a student actually broke a bone, and that caused a bleed, and it was the tourniquet that basically saved their life. So, I mean, they could have, they could have died from a broken bone, which I broke my bone in elementary school. So, you know, just something that seems pretty commonplace, it could, it could really be more dangerous than you think, so. All right.
I was just curious, how are they secured from students tampering with them?